We have captions.
All right, captions are on.
Okay, thank you. I make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Does anybody have a conflict of interest or any disclosure regarding the agenda items before us?
I do not.
I'll just note that as in the past, I'm reviewing the item related to historic Pittsburgh since my wife serves on the board and I'll do so this evening as well.
Okay, thank you. Lilly?
I do not.
Okay, and I do not. Since our village clerk is not here, we have our deputy treasurer sitting in. I'll just talk about the open meeting compliance certification. If there's anybody online wishing to speak, do not speak to us through chat. Please do the raise your hand and submit your question for us. Anybody here in the room also state your name and address and we expect everybody to be courteous. Okay, so with that being said, the first item on this is the non-municipal permit for historic Pittsburgh and you have the material. Yeah, if there are any questions. I love this.
I'll just leave the room except I'm not asking.
Okay.
The same as last year.
Yeah, it's the same as last year and really, nothing has changed. I just think it's so great, you know, to do this and it was really successful before. So. Any other comments?
Yeah, I don't have the in front of me.
Yeah, it's, you know.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-municipal use permit for historic Pittsburgh for the dates between May
May and November 15th.
Yeah, May and November 2023. Along Seamus Alley and Historic Walk to include. I don't know what the to scan with your phone.
The QR code.
QR code.
That's an accurate description.
That's good. Okay, okay. We have a motion. Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
All right, trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Okay. Justin, you can come back.
Thank you.
Quick and easy.
Yeah, done and done. No, it's a good project. Okay, so the purpose of this meeting is just for our budget review, budget workshop and our village clerk is not feeling well, so and treasurer, so she wasn't able to be here, as I said. And we did have a little phone conference with her, Brooklyn and I, a little bit earlier. So she hasn't had an opportunity to revise some of the numbers based on discussion. But she wanted to convey, and I'm in agreement, that we at least should consider looking at this and just adopting this as the tentative budget to move us forward because, you know, we have to meet our benchmarks. To set the date for the public hearing, which would be on April 13th. And if we adopt this as a tentative budget, all that means is that we continue to work on it. And she'll be able to revise those numbers for our meeting next week, which will be on Monday.
Okay, I want to make sure I understand that because there's a lot. I shouldn't say a lot. I don't want to quantify it. There are some things with the budget that I would like to address.
Yeah.
And so.
Yeah, we can certainly start it now, but I mean, I just think that we really should consider.
What would the penalty be if it was not, if it was not to be, if it was not to pass, the tentative budget was not to pass today? What would be the penalty?
Well, we would bring it right back next week. It would be next week, which we certainly can do, but Brooklyn, you were just saying too, it really tightens our timeframe.
Yeah, if we wait another week, we will probably be, I think, three days within our maximum limit here. So if it's not approved this weekend, it definitely have to be approved next week on the 20th.
It's approved on the 20th. The only downside to waiting till next week is that it doesn't give you guys enough time to get it published and out to that work or.
Well, we did change that notification to a five day.
Yes.
Yeah.
From a ten, so that helps us. So we can still meet that date of April 13th for the public hearing. But, you know, I think the intention was, you know, before Dorothea got sick, was to really work through things and then adopt it tentatively so we could move forward. But if you guys are more comfortable, you know, you can raise whatever your questions are, we can bring them up now and then certainly.
Well, let's do that and see where.
Plan on, you know, plan on really next week, we have to really move forward with this. Yeah.
I agree. That's a good approach. Let's get into some of the issues of the budget and see how things go. I'd also like to mention, though, I looked at the website and I don't see the tentative budget posted. And I would just like to make sure that in general, when we're voting on matters, that they would be in front of the public too, so they know what we're discussing.
Typically, it hasn't been posted because it's a draft. We don't post our drafts.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Well, it is tentative.
When we adopted this tentative budget, then it then it's posted. Because right now, it's just a working document internally. And we do obviously have our meetings held publicly for this, but once it's adopted as a tentative budget, then it goes right up on the website and then we have our date and notice for the public hearing and that's.
And you, we can make significant changes to it even after we post the tentative.
Oh, for sure. Oh, for sure. Yeah.
I just wanted to make that clear from, I know that, but from the public's, yeah.
Right, right. And again, to adopt it as a tentative budget is enabling I don't know, I guess it enables us to set that date for the public hearing so we're within the compliance with the state comptroller's office to have it adopted by a certain date. And in no way, shape or form does it mean that's the budget cast in concrete, right? Yeah, so we continue to work and we work with the public and we get the feedback from our public as well. So thanks, thank you for bringing that up, Renee. I think that's an important point as well.
And worst case scenario, if it isn't adopted by a certain date, we can still continue to work on it without penalty, I believe.
Yeah, what happens, it's a good point because what happens under New York State Comptroller's guidelines and law, we just have our tentative budget. We keep moving forward. That would be the adopted budget and then we amend. We keep working on it. Yeah.
Okay.
So. Hi, Dan.
Hello, sorry, I'm late.
Oh, hey.
Everybody healthy?
Yeah.
You look like.
Is this a baby? Thank you.
I actually like it better.
Okay, so where we are discussing is we are going to need either this evening or a week from today. We are going to have to adopt this as in some fashion as a tentative budget. We all know that and we continue to work on it. Our clerk treasurer is out sick sadly, so she wasn't able to revise some of the numbers. But we have a meeting again a week from today where we can, you know, she can bring everything in line and revisit it. But while everybody's here, for substantial questions and things you want to address and discuss, and Lilly, you had mentioned that as well. So if you want to start in, okay?
I can.
You wanted to go first?
I have a couple. Just to clarify, we're talking about a tax increase with the tentative budget. I thought I heard a number of around nine percent before. I wasn't sure if that was changed in the copy. And perhaps I'm not looking at the right version of this, but I'm looking at seven and a half percent potentially in terms of the revenue from property taxes. I just wondered if we can clarify and make sure that we're on the same page in terms of those overall numbers.
The date in your upper right-hand corner is what date?
I don't have pages right now, so let me check to see. I changed. Okay, so page layout view. This is 3623. Is that not the?
Yeah, you have the most recent one and what I'm realizing, Brooklyn, you've printed out the older version for me.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't even have the most recent version, so I'll have to go online now and see if I can.
So is the.
So we have the older version. I apologize because I thought you had printed the same. Okay, so we both have the older version that has not been dated yet.
Dorothea was out.
Right, so.
She didn't get a chance to pick mine up.
And redo the packet because that's the only one I have access to.
Okay, so, yeah, so.
So the nine percent has been changed to seven and a half?
I think she, I don't think she has landed on anything. I think that's really where, when she got sick, she hasn't finalized looking at that. And I think the discussion that we had had was she was looking at the.
I apologize.
Right, yeah, that she was looking at essentially the consumer price index and thinking that it probably be in line with that. You know, which at this point is roughly seven percent, I think.
A little bit over six and a half.
Okay, okay, thanks, Brooklyn. And that, I think, was where she was going, but again, it's what I indicated in the beginning of the meeting. She has not, even with this particular packet on the sixth, been able to revise those numbers and work with those numbers to bring them into line. So we're stuck a little bit.
And a portion of that increase is that sewer adjustment.
Well, that's not included in this piece that I'm talking about.
Okay.
At least here around that number.
Right, you're right. All right.
So what is the final number then? One nine three nine? Do you have that right?
I do not. And I requested it from Dorothy. I know she never emailed me back. I can ask her when we talked on the phone, but she sounded so terrible. We kind of wanted to get her off this.
What is the, what is the amount that the taxes need to cover? Ballpark it.
Yeah, do you have the ballpark on that?
If I can access the numbers from this.
Because I have the older sheet, so I'm not going to reflect an accurate number.
Are we talking about the total anticipated general fund appropriations?
Yes.
That's the number.
Yeah.
The number that I'm looking at here, 2023-24 tentative on the March 6th updated sheet says 1,939,470.
Yeah, that's what I have too. So what then, what then is the tax, what portion of that 1939 is a tax increase? So how much in real dollars?
Do we, I don't know if we have that.
What's that? So Justin, how did you calculate seven percent?
Hold on one minute and I'll tell you. So what I did, actually, that is, so it's based on the revenues tab. I took the the 23-24 tentative amount of revenue for real property tax, which is just shy of a million. And I subtracted from that number the 21-22 budgeted amount. And that's the seven and a half 7.6% increase.
Oh, you did an increase on the overall bottom line?
I did an, I did an increase on the revenue, the tax revenue, property tax for the general fund. That's, that's the 7.6. It's line four, row four on the revenues tab.
Total real property taxes?
Actually, just, yes, the line above that, but same thing.
Nine six four five seven five?
Yes.
Okay, so it looks like taxes then are raising about, call it sixty, call it $70,000.
Yep.
Okay, back to the neck and it's $70,000. So we can sharpen our pencils and try to figure out how much, so $70,000 out of 1.9 million. Hold on.
No, out of just shy of a million.
No, 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 just of the overall.
You're looking at the overall number though.
So 70,000, we have a $70,000 shortfall that we're making up by raising taxes about 70,000. Out of 1.9 million. One, two, three. Let's see, 901, 2, 3. Let's see, 1900. So it's about a three percent, it's three percent of the total budget. So what I'm proposing is that we find a way to possibly reduce our expenses by three percent overall. So we don't have to raise taxes. And at least go through that exercise because we've not done that exercise yet.
And I think that's, you know, possibly where she was going as well in terms of.
There's not a huge amount of money to try and trick, tricking 70,000 out of a 1.9 million dollar budget, and it's even more than 1.9. It's 1940, call it. Shouldn't be that hard to do. Especially because we've got such a good team in the office.
The one thing that she brought up that we have been talking about, she brought it up at the last meeting. Because of the fire and the concern about the electrical components service actually in the building, that we really are looking at redoing that and really, well, first of all, evaluating it, making sure we have what we need for the future.
Yeah, you should improve the electric supply coming into the building. So right now, we feel that the system may be overburdened and to bring it up to something that would be more compliant with future use would require going through a lot of, you know, creating the service coming into the building and also the distribution.
Yeah, distribution from the box to the outlet. Yeah, so we need to get estimates on that, but that's, that's out there. I mean, that is something that was identified, I think, in a report that was done about the structure over 20 years ago.
That the Beryl report?
Yeah, yeah, and that's the one that we're going to try to get the funding to update that. So, you know, we're looking at that and that is an idea that could come out of our general fund. And that's why she really wants to keep the healthy fund balance and I can understand that because it's not a lightweight task to do this.
Yeah, we hadn't anticipated that when we started the budget process. The fire hadn't been created and we knew because of the report that was on there, but. Is there any, that can't, that's not included in, that can't fall under any of our grant funding or any of these other things that.
Potentially it could, you know, a lot of moving parts here.
Yeah.
But it needs to be done no matter what. And I think we've all recognized that and, you know, and Zach, I know you were part of that discussion as well.
And did you have a, did we have a number back then? Obviously, it would be really old. We don't, we have no idea about what it would cost to.
It's not, to give you an idea of where we are with some of our capital improvement projects, and I'll just take the back entrance because that's kind of an obvious one. We received a $100,000 grant to do that back entrance like six years ago. And it wasn't, it wasn't used. The project was, at that point, was $100,000 and it would take care of that back exit and make it a lot safer. We just received the bids on the project. We closed that out and it was how many, what was the last one? 260 something thousand?
Yeah, that was about the heated door to the.
Well, that was every, I mean, I was just saying, it was all inclusive. We could have done the bid with the heated sidewalk with $100,000 six years ago. Here we are, six years later, in a different economy. And now to do the exact same project, let's just do apples to apples right now. We, we have to come up with $160,000 above and beyond that $100,000 grant to even just do back steps. And, you know, and grading out the area and doing the excavation and all of that. So all of our costs now for, you know, some of these capital improvements are really, it's significant. And you've been seeing this all year with DPW. So it's something to consider. I mean, I think, you know, we're in an inflationary cycle. I think everybody knows that and there's distribution issues and all of that, but hopefully, it isn't going to last forever, but we have to kind of surf the wave here a bit, you know. And as a result, with this back exit project, we're going to have to scale back dramatically to get it done. Otherwise, we'll lose the $100,000. So, yeah, that's where we are. But, but again, we have a healthy fund balance and we have to kind of keep that fund balance intact for things like this.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's my two cents. Yep.
So I would propose that we would ask Dorothea for a list of possible cuts that total 3.6% in budget. And just ask her to take a first cut in it. Can't hurt before we start looking at, or if you want to. It's kind of hard to look at individual items without her.
Yeah.
So maybe ask her to take a first cut in it. She's going to be able to do it or not, or maybe she'll be able to do something in between. I don't know.
I just want to say that this is already a very slimmed down version of what was first proposed. Per each department, we are back down to bare bones just to get through and move here. So by, again, chipping way out of two degrees, that it's going to look, you know, similar to how it was a few years back.
I hear you and it's part of our job to have to do it. We may not end up.
Just want to point that, yeah, fairness come up in the cast on our reflection of what our needs and desires are versus what is usually happening.
Yeah, I appreciate your input on that. Just, yeah.
Yeah, if I might just offer a couple of comments too about where I see us standing. I appreciate trustee Keating, trustee Keating's suggestion to have Dorothea do a round of reviews to see where we might build a cut. I think that's a great start. I guess looking back at the last couple of years, but I've also been involved in this process. A couple of years ago, we were having some issues with the accounting system. It was, it was very difficult to get a feel for where we stood in terms of the actual cash balances and where the village was on a monthly basis for the financials. Dorothea's done a very good job of addressing that and brought that into line. Still, the following year, we didn't have a really great field for the future and things like multi-year capital planning. And at this point, we still, in my opinion at least, aren't in a better position with regard to those multi-year capital plans, which are something that I think should be considered and adopted by the board to know which path we're going down. So really, from looking back at the last couple of years where we had a zero percent, we had a flat tax, zero percent increase a couple of years ago, zero percent increase last year. I had some concerns about that because I didn't feel like it was a clear trajectory to be saving for things like what Zach is talking about in the DPW, as the DPW super. And that leaves us in a position where the the change in our ask from villagers in terms of the revenue we're looking to correct can be less predictable than where we want it to be. And we've got a situation where we've been every year pretty much rubber stamping a tax cap waiver where we can go above the two percent allowed by the state. I think that we could do a better job of keeping to that if we had a longer term plan. So I think that having the clerk, having the treasurer, I'm sorry, look at places where we can cut down the budget is a great start. I'm still not confident that's going to give me an overall picture of what we need to do going forward to make this a process that people feel is, is very predictable. The there's other parts of this context too that are concerning to me. It's not just that this is at least a seven and a half percent or maybe a nine percent increase, as we've mentioned in the past. But we're also taking a lot more from the sewer revenue. So most costs have been across the board attributed 22% to the sewer fund, a little bit more in certain cases, a little bit less in a couple of cases. But there's a big ask from the sewer department as we're splitting it out. On top of that, we're increasing the sewer rents by 15% this year, where we've done a 10% in the past. So just the three and a half percent reduction that we're looking for here, it doesn't give us the full picture of what the increase is in terms of the overall appropriation.
So I may just interject the traditional rate of the sewer going up at 10%. If we add on another 5%, I believe, Brooklyn, you and Dorothy did the averaging out for each household and it came to roughly $21 or $22?
Yeah, so that would be $20 additional per year.
Okay.
So to add the sewer.
Okay.
These are.
Five percent increase over the normal 10?
It is a 5% increase over the normal 10 and a lot more costs are going to that. So I think we're perhaps even drawing down some of the funds over in that area. And I think that's something that we need to look at. I would, I would favor an approach where we have a more in-depth study of what the actual costs are. I mentioned this in the last meeting too. But just to get all my thoughts out there so we can consider them, I do think that we need to be more fine-grained than just saying it's 22% of all of these expense areas. We, this is also in the context of dropping off legal fees from things like 75 Monroe. We've said in the past that increases in tax revenue were required because of litigation in part. Those costs are gone and we're still looking for even a bigger increase than we've considered at this stage in the cycle in previous years. We've also given a recommendation to the Monroe County Comita Board where we're not going to be collecting 50% of the revenue potentially on the new development of 75 Monroe. That's going to be a longer term revenue.
That's a completely different discussion. It really is.
It's part of our revenues and I saw it at the floor, Mayor, I'd like to go to continue.
That's, I will address it after you. Yeah.
That's great. I appreciate being given the floor so that I can complete my thoughts. I do think that is a significant part of the revenue picture for the next 10 years since we're losing 50% of the revenue overall for that property. And finally, there's been a new commercial building acquired by the town, which I believe is going to take it off of the tax roll for the village. So that's, that's a great project. They're looking at turning the real estate building from Monroe into a town court. Great thing overall, but I think that's also going to take it off of the town tax rolls and we're going to be looking at that impact on revenue in coming years. So I would like to start with the suggestion by trustee Keating, which I appreciate to have our treasurer take a pass at reducing some of these costs. I think the actual burden is larger. I think the overall situation with fiscal planning has not been substantially improved in the last couple of years. And we're not looking at a great situation there. And so I'd like to come back to the table with a revised budget and continue the discussion. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to just address a couple of things that you said and I thank you for your input. You know, and I hear what you're saying, that she really wants to be a very predictable process. And I think if we look back at where we really were on the micro level here in our village two years ago, at the state level and at the national level, it was a really different financial picture two years ago. Where, you know, now we have really just escalated into a significant inflationary cycle that's impacting every single municipality that I don't know that anybody would have predicted two years ago. You know, so I think, I think we have to take that into consideration. And the the sort of your thoughts that we're somehow taking a lot more from sewer. I challenged that a bit because we're not taking anything from sewer. What we have explained in public meetings repeatedly is that we are now identifying sewer as its own profit center. Sewer should always stand on its own instead of pulling money from general funds to quote, pay for sewer, things that should be attributed to running essentially a separate and independent sewer department. So all we're doing now, and I see this very much as we're in transition. We're in transition identifying these items. You can see on your budget sheets that we have all kinds of new lines on the budget, breaking things out, making things more transparent, eliminating lines that do not serve to clarify anything in the budget. So I think you're really seeing, and again, even Dorothea, and you can chime in too, Brooklyn, we are in transition right now and Dorothea has mentioned, based on her last, her last attendance at the state comptroller's conference, that she is looking at moving us to what's known as dynamic budgeting. And that would be starting to forecast and put things out and becoming more predictable. But I think, you know, we're dealing with circumstances that are not just unique to our village. These are circumstances that are part of the economic environment that's out there. And I would like to speak to Comita. You cannot lose what you never had. And we never had significant taxes on that parcel. And furthermore, we did not grant any tax abatement in any way, shape or form to this developer. That can only happen from the county. And I don't even know if they put in their application or not, frankly. We just said that we would support the residential component of that. And what that means is that we support job creation and we support affordable housing, nothing more than that. We do not grant them tax abatements. That's not, not our job. So, and again, I think going forward, I agree that, you know, let's see if Dorothea can maybe drill down a bit. Let's look for coming up with what was it, the 3.6%? I think that's probably a realistic way to go. Let's have her take a look at that. And hopefully, she'll be feeling better in a few days and can circle back with all of us and we can have things prepared for the board on Monday.
Can I chime in?
Yeah, sure.
So I see that as a two-step process. So we'll ask her to take a first cut at it and then we'll, we'll take a look at it. And the other part of that that we haven't done yet is look at the outliers. We've done that exercise where we we look at the difference between this year and last year and see which are the ones that grew and shrunk the most and just see. Is it right? To get the low hanging fruit out of that. So it may yield some change. It may not. I don't know.
So in that new.
So in that new budget, or the new version that we're talking about having Dorothea work up, do we need to include those numbers for the electricity? Because that's, or for the electric upgrades that you're talking about for that?
We certainly could do it. I mean, at this point, we-
For the next budget cycle?
We're going to need to look at it soon, sooner than later. I mean, I, you know, we've had lights flickering, you know, it's not a good situation here and it's an old building, you know, so we want to take care of that.
So we want to make sure that's in this next budget.
Yeah, and I'll bring that back to Dorothea. You know, there's certainly, we have the cushion in the general fund to be able to take a look at that. And I think that's really where she was going.
Okay.
You know, we didn't have a real long conversation with her. She really wasn't feeling well. So, you know, and Brooklyn, jump in if there's anything I'm missing from that particular conversation. You know, I think it was really more that she knew she wanted, had to come back and revisit the numbers. I think she would be in agreement with really everything that we're saying at this point. And, you know, we should all be prepared really to kind of nail this thing next Monday. You know, with that being said, so.
Also want to point out a big changes around planning for capital improvements. Could you silence your cell phone, please? We've done a much better job of that than we have in the past of looking, of stocking money away and planning for 5,000 here, 10,000 there. It's the exercise that you really helped with over, over 10 years or whatever. So just wanted to note that there is significant improvement on the cap, and it may not be done yet to Justin's point, but there is some real improvement in how we're saving for the capital projects in the future.
Yeah, it starts with two minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're going in the right direction, you know? So that's a good thing. Yeah, any other thoughts on that?
Do we have to, do we have to approve this today or can we wait a week?
Right before you came in, we just thought, you know, why don't we circle back with Dorothea and then be, let's be prepared, you know, next month. It's just, it's, it's a week, you know?
Yeah.
And we can be prepared to do it. Lily, was there anything else you wanted to add on this? I'm sorry, I just put that right now. Just realized I want to ask her.
I thank trustee Keating for his, for what he's pointed out because it was on my mind. Bring it up, the 9% is what was stated at the last meeting and it, and I, it was a hard stop for me and I knew we had to go back to the table and examine because 9% is too many.
I think she put it out there saying, if we did nothing, that's where we would be. I mean, I think she was just trying to let the board know that would be the starting point. And so, you know, we're all in agreement on this. I think we, every single one of us is in agreement on that. Yeah.
So I came into this meeting today with that on my mind. Concern when you said you anticipated to approve the tentative budget today, that was foremost on my mind. I really was hesitant to approve a budget that included a 9% tax increase.
But you do understand now that even by approving, you know, and Renee brought that up and thank you for that Renee, that even when you approve a tentative budget, it's tentative, you're still, it's still a work in progress, you know? So I'm fine with next week, don't, don't get me wrong. I mean, I think, but we have to move forward. And so we will direct Dorothea to help us out here if we have a small amount.
Rather than wait until the next meeting when Dorothea brings back to us what the possible adjustments could be to bring us to that. She, that's what she's going to be working with. I mean, should we wait until that time to adopt that as the tentative budget?
Brooklyn, what are you thinking?
Obviously either or, but on March 20th, it has to be approved.
It has to be, we have to approve the tentative.
Yeah.
And then to what penalty, to what end?
For our next meeting, so that's why we-
I'm not sure whether you're seeing penalty with this, but just question-
That's for our next regular meeting, so that's what we're putting on the calendar.
Right.
It's not on there, so we should get it on the calendar as well.
Right.
And Dorothea's out, so we can get that up.
Yeah, no, she went home sick on Friday, so she probably didn't get it on the calendar. I'll make a note of that though, thank you for that.
It says there's one, there's an HPB meeting at 5:30 on Monday.
Yeah, so we do 4 o'clock again.
We do 4 o'clock, okay.
Can everyone make Monday?
I'll be late, but it's, yeah.
Because we can't wait till the Thursday meeting?
No, we cannot. We cannot. Because it takes us off the schedule.
Okay.
Yeah.
And some, and I'd like to understand better how each year, because I'm assuming this is what's going to happen each year now, that you dip into the sewer fund in order to, I think she used the term 20% in some, on some lines, to keep going back there to take, every time you're taking from this pool, how is that being replenished? I mean, it's not a never-ending source.
With sewer rents.
And so once you reach that, once we raise them to 15%, it's self-sustaining, is my question.
We are trying to get the sewer fund to, and this has been the goal and this has been what was flagged also by the comptroller. It has to be seen as a standalone department. It has to. And so what we're seeing now again is this transition of starting to recognize what percentages, and this is what was worked out with the best practices through the accountant and also from the state comptroller's office, the percentages. You know, so if we buy software, let me give you an example. We buy a software package for the office, you know, for everybody to use. There's a percentage of that that probably should be paid for by sewer because part of that will be used to quote run the sewer department or component of how we run our village. And that's all we're seeing for the first time. So, and I know it's difficult because it's like we're, it's all new. So we're not dipping into sewer, we're not. What we're doing is recognizing the costs associated in a true form associated with running sewer. We're not dipping into it and taking it and putting it somewhere. So the sewer rents come in, it funds the sewer department and all of the things that we do to run the sewer department, whatever percentage has been attributed to it through best practices, that's how we, we look at that department. And you're seeing it for the first time broken out this way in the budget. And it's, it's different, you know? It's different. So we're not dipping into it.
Okay.
Sewer funds itself through sewer rents. Yeah.
That, that was, that was my question, that it is self-sustaining, that each time we're, each year we're removing and then during the next, we get them and it's replenished.
Right, just as, as the taxes, property taxes go into general.
Okay.
Because we're even getting down to the details of holding sewer responsible for utilities, even if I think Zach, we just did a purchase order for new clothing, how many of those clothing will be used for sewage? You know, if they're getting a higher boost, they're getting thicker jackets for sewer.
Right.
But we're all, we're all targeting general for those items.
Yeah, and it all came through general fund. General fund is paying for everything that sewer was potentially using.
Right.
Yeah, that's really where we're going.
Even down like the sales for our waste management, RGME, sewer pays 0% of RGME. Only thing sewer is responsible is RGME is our street lighting at the water.
Right.
That's the one thing sewer pays for as far as RGME utilities.
Yeah. Yep, so it's sort of two separate departments, it's like sewer and then everything else, you know? I mean, that's sort of, I think the way we kind of break it out, yeah.
I, I think that overall, I agree with this transition and this idea. And I think that changes in accounting can certainly enhance transparency and help people to see where the finances are going. They can also make things more opaque, especially when you change accounting. You want to be very careful that when you're doing so, you're doing so in a way that is very well explained and clearly researched. And my concern about this, again, is just the blanket, you know, putting down 22% of expenses for village hall and heating. You know, is that really the cost to the sewer department and is that necessary to run the sewers? And maybe it is, maybe it isn't. But that's something that I would like to explore to make sure that this is a change that's intended for transparency of accounting and sustainability rather than perhaps hiding a cost that should be in general in a different area and hiding a de facto increase in taxes. And, and I think that that's what's really important to explain to the public and to make clear to the board. Related to the point of sustainability of that fund, finally, I think that having a multi-year capital plan in place is a good way to ensure that the attribution of those costs to the sewer fund is a sustainable thing. Without that kind of accounting and forecasting, we really, the answer is we really don't know if it'll work or not.
Yeah, you know, I, I want to just explore the use of the word that it can also make things more opaque. So you're, the reference, what is making it more opaque? The fact that there's a 22% breakout? I'm trying to understand that, that would help me to understand what's making something more opaque when I'm, I'm thinking, I'm seeing more lines that are clearer to me on the budget and better descriptions of where the money's going. So help me with that, please.
Sure, I think that generally any change in the way, in the way that you're recording books, and as we said, we're in a transitional period here where there are a lot of things shifting around, that means that you don't have the same kind of year-over-year ability to analyze those books. And it can make things, as a matter of process and accounting, I believe, less, less transparent, more opaque. So maybe the attribution that we specified here is good enough, maybe it's not. I don't, personally don't feel comfortable without a deeper dive into those numbers to see if that's what makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just curious how you go about, if you have a recommendation on how to handle those requests?
As we discussed in the last meeting, I think that we've done that in some areas where we sent out the sewer bills and we looked at what the actual costs are. I think they're doing a broader sampling, not, not doing an exact cost counting for every single category, but talking about each of those categories in detail before we change the attribution. The blanket attribution of 22% to most of the line items in sewer, to me, is not convincing.
Okay, even though, I mean, that, that was vetted with the accountant and the state comptroller's office's best practices, so there's another approach that you would prefer to use.
The accountants aren't going to say that that's correct. They're going to say that that's one way that we can divide things up. And ultimately, the level of risk that we're willing to assess for that and the amount of transparency is up to this board. That's our job as fiduciaries.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Did you have any thoughts? Okay, yeah, Bob?
Hi.
Name and address for the record.
47 Washington Avenue, this is Brooklyn, 14534. First of all, it would be helpful for those of us that make the effort to attend these meetings if we could actually see the material you're discussing. I noticed it wasn't in the packet, it wasn't a packet, it was posted until yesterday. And I know transparency is an important issue for this administration, so in the interest of transparency, it would be nice to have a copy so we can follow along with what you're actually discussing. The other thing I'd like to say in reference to the charges to the sewer department, during my administration, we worked with the comptroller's office to understand what was the appropriate amount to charge to the sewer department. If it's for a salary, then the person whose salary or proportion is being charged shouldn't start filling out a timesheet with his portioning, so there's documentation to show how much time is attributable to the sewer department. The other comment I would have, if you're using, going by a percentage basis, then you need to demonstrate that that, somehow that that charge that you're charging to the sewer department is directly related to the sewer service. So for example, if you were saying to charge 20% of the window repairs on village hall to the sewer department, you would have to show that beyond the general services, there's obviously a need for the general services of the village to have the village windows operable, what benefit and how is that tied to the performance of sewer services? And that's where this becomes, I think, challenging. And I think that's the point the trustee like in is trying to bank.
So the sewer, thank you so much. The sewer department is co-located with the administration of the village. Sewer department exists here. So part of what happens here is attributed to sewer in terms of, if sewer in a separate building and the windows needed to be repaired in that building, there you go. It happens to be co-located with us. But I think, you know, thank you for your, for your points. Zach, did you want to add anything to that about the timesheets and the putting in?
It's a daunting task in my perspective to be able to have everything itemized out down to a stamp. You know, it's, it's really tedious to do something like that. And that's why I was wondering if there is a template to be able to use to start dividing time that would show a real number versus something that, you know, you're trying to estimate to-
Try to average it out, you know? Well, I think you raised the point, yes.
I was just going to ask a follow-up to that. Going forward, you're saying it would be too difficult for, if your team goes out and two of them work on a sewer project, for them to kind of, because right now they just attribute it to general?
Hour?
I mean, there is no designation. It's just, you're, you're just accounting for your time in general.
Correct, yeah. So our, our time, I should say their time, because their daily timesheet that they fill out is separated by the quarter hour. And each quarter hour, how much time that they would set aside to sewer services. So if they go out and inspect a siphon or flip open a manhole, then they're logging that time and is that time spent towards sewer within?
Yeah, so that would be an extra step, but how do you-
That's already in the process.
That's what they're doing.
Yeah, that's-
I meant designating, doing what trustee like at the same, going forward, being a little more specific with the time. Are we going to do that now that we have two separate, now that sewer is separate? When do you, when your team say, you know, account for their sewer time so that we have real time?
Yes, from the DPW, from the DPW's perspective, the way that we fill out our timesheets, that's already being shown.
Okay, it has been right now, okay.
How much a person's salary is awarded towards that due to the workload they're doing.
And that Zach, our recent hire will be working primarily on sewer, so we will be able to really identify.
For the last few years to keep someone as a sewer head within our own shop, so all things sewer-related and work gets put on that person first. But that's a true reflection of where-
So that one we have a true accounting for. What, what you're concerned about is the windows, these other things that we have on that line item that you think 20% may, may or may not be correct. So how do we figure out whether it is or not? Should we just lay on the list together?
We very well could. I, I think that what I'm suggesting shouldn't really, and actually we're farther along in using the data to understand what the costs are than I thought we were. I would say that if you've already got something in the process to figure out how much time is accountable, that's great. We just look at two or three days of that and average it and that's the percentage that we use for the budget purposes, right?
For people's time.
Yeah, yeah. And then we're done. We don't have to look at that, we don't have to account for every single minute. We just have to do that exercise and extrapolate it based on a couple of days of time. I would start with that and then say, well, if the DPW is spending that much time, then let's talk about village hall, let's talk about the time that people are spending in the office, let's take a sample of that and then see how much the infrastructure should, should follow from-
No, I believe that will be the difficult part. I just spent the past two months doing sewer. So if, like Dorothea once said, if sewer was a total separability, let's say I couldn't access the sewer systems here and I had to go about with DPW and clock in completely separately, or a whole different sewer building, that building will be responsible for windows, RGME, wifi. So that's why we're trying to bring part of that cost to village hall. Because right now village hall, directly from our general fund pays 100% of that, where for the past two months, everything I've done on the computer has been sewer-related.
I, I think that that's, that's fine. I just think that this should be data-driven rather than just a blanket attribution of a certain percentage. I don't feel like we're doing that.
And the other way you can do that is to start somewhere and document why, how you arrived at that number and then refine it when you've actually been doing it. And it's, as long as you can document, hey, this is, this is the thought that went into this and this is why we arrived at that number. And it can be everything from this is what we talked to the state comptroller's office about to, you know, we looked at Brooklyn's time, he spent a solid two months doing it, that's one-sixth of his time, but then there, there's other stuff peppered throughout, so add another-
Or it would be double because we do four months.
Right, so, okay, so-
So I will say this for-
Four months and then a little bit of time here and there, call it five of, yeah, but he's not, so you just write a bunch of bullets and start somewhere and then refine it over time. And, and we will certainly pass any kind of audit and, and also can look our villagers in the eye and say, this is how we came up with this. You got to start somewhere.
So I would definitely say the August billing, I will start from, you know, when I'm initially going, maybe monitor how much time I'm actually spending in sewer, so that I'll probably get the start most accurate as far as how much the office staff is using.
So not, not just rents, but you get a sewer call, you know, or you're looking up on something related to, right, something. The other thing Zach, I would also question whether we should do two days or two weeks or, you know, because there, I'm sure there's variance in-
When they're working on a repair versus regular week, yeah.
So even if it's an estimate of a week and then maybe do two or three of those and, you know, just sit down over some donuts at the end of the week and say, all right, how much of your week was spent on that?
just sit down, order some donuts at the end of the week and say, all right, how much of your week was spent on that?
Yeah, that's all walk up ready.
And we came to the number we did.
Yeah, yeah. Dorothea didn't pull the number out of thin air. She, she looked at the records and averaged things, yeah.
We can actually, we, we, theirs is pretty accurate.
That's good.
It is.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I agree with trustee Keating's suggestions, especially the donuts at the end of the day. But what, what I would do is, is potentially say, well, we've done some of this research for DPW. That's good enough, let's, let's do the, the quarter attribution for those salaries. But I would be very conservative in the areas that we have not yet substantiated with that data, things like village hall windows, and I would reduce those to 10% just to make sure that if anything, we're going under rather than over attributing, which in my opinion would be a way that we are hiding a de facto tax increase in all the sewer rents.
And what I would do instead is rely on the state comptroller's office and on NICOM, rather than, because your estimate of 10% is truly made up, theirs is based on something else.
Have they given us, and I, I have not seen any numbers from NICOM or the comptroller's office. If we could be issued a letter that says that they support that number, then I would be inclined to go along with that number too.
Sure, I think Dorothea included that in her report as part of her narrative. But if you'd like to see additional documentation, we can ask her to provide that to the board.
I think that would be great, along with the tentative.
Yeah, I don't think she came in with a percentage like, whoopie, here we go.
Okay.
Yeah, Zach.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say because of, let's say it is 25% that the crew is working on sewers, it's documented on the timesheet every week, everything within that building, the DPW with the trucks, the fuel, the electricity that we use in the building, everything that we bring into that building, 25% of that could be justified being paid for out of this work.
I agree.
Yeah, and for example, you know, the new bathroom, the bathroom facilities and the shower facilities that you need and laundry, a significant portion of that would come from sewer. Because you're working in raw sewage, you have to come in, you need to change your clothing, you need to wash clothes, shower, disinfect, you know, all of that. So that's a huge reason why those facilities need to be the way they're going to be designed, you know?
But it can also be a reflection of how the office runs as well. It's not just Brooklyn that does the sewers, he has an assistant. So everything that would relate to that.
I, I think we're in agreement on that. I, I agree with the establishment of an attribution of costs to the sewer fund. I think it's just, and, and I have very much less of an issue with the DPW, which it sounds like it's already done the substantiated empirical work. I think we just have to replicate that across other areas to make sure that the numbers are tracked.
So I, this has been helpful for me to understand because I, now I'm seeing, or understanding, I think, that your, your term opaque is tied to how that percentage has been derived as we move forward. That's my takeaway on that, and that we would need additional sort of, you know, research and documentation about that.
Justification to, to explain to the villagers why this is a shift. Why we're doing it, we've got part of that, maybe the numbers from NICOM, the suggested numbers.
And the accounting firm, you know, yeah.
So we had in there, so that is, again, starting from somewhere. And then next year, we'll have real data to build on.
To me, this is about continual refinement of, of the process and the transition. And, you know, I think we're going in the right direction, you know? And I think everybody's input's been really helpful, honestly.
And I didn't mean to say we don't have real data, I meant more real data on some of the funding ones, yeah.
Exactly, no, I think everybody's input's been really good. Is there any other comment for, you know, where, Billy, no?
It wasn't necessarily about the sewer, did that make?
Okay, okay.
Okay, I'm going to go.
Yep.
Go back again to the tentative budget adoption. If it was not and we were going forward, let us say there's a scenario where we're still hammering out items in the budget and trying to get the budget to balance and all agree on what percentage, if any, of tax increase we're looking at. When you move forward and a budget is not adopted by, by the, by the date that is recommended by the state of New York, you are operating, continue to operate under the current budget, not the tentative budget. Is that correct or incorrect?
Correct.
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, so you will not be operating under the tentative budget that was adopted. I'm sorry to be so.
No, wait, no.
Yeah, you've asked this, in years past, and, and that was always the answer, that we were given, yes.
Yeah.
That you would operate on last year's approved budget, not, yes.
Not the tentative.
Correct.
But I would like to say that if there's, and this is how I, I view it, the tentative budget does not negate the continual work on the budget. And, hang on, and working out those categories or those issues that we're identifying. In my mind, you want to adopt at least the tentative budget going forward, knowing that you have whole sections of your budget already in place. You know, we, we've got a lot, a lot of this done. And so to kind of leave that by the wayside, I, I, I would not be comfortable with that. Because I know even when we adopt a tentative budget, we continue to work on it.
Absolutely, I guess what I was trying to express is my concern that this, that the tentative budget would be our budget going forward until the actual budget was adopted. But in truth, as trustee Keating just pointed out, we would be operating with the current budget, not new tentative. Because there are some line items here that, you know, I would like to see reduced frankly. And I don't want to move forward and start operating with a tentative budget. So I want to make certain that we would be operating on the budget that we have currently.
Yeah, you have your budget.
An eventual budget is adopted. And we do have a grace period. I think after, let's say it's May, May 1st is the actual date. I think they give you some grace period after that. You can still operate under the old budget.
Yeah, I don't remember.
And continue with the budget process. I'm just trying to point out that there's a safety valve there, that's all.
Okay.
If there's not agreement by the 13th, when the hearing is, is that what you're saying? If there's not agreement.
I'm saying, I.
By the 13th.
But I know, there's so much unknown here that it's hard to say, you know, what's going to occur. I don't, I don't know, so.
So the, the line items that, you know, you brought up, there's some items that you're still concerned about. Well, why don't we talk about those now, get a list together so we can bring that right back to our treasurer. That's why we're here, you know, we don't need to wait on that.
Okay, rather than the treasurer coming to us and saying, this is what I think.
Well, if you have concerns, I mean, we're all here to collaborate and work on the budget. So if you have, there's certain items, if there's a page that you're looking at, you know.
Yeah, I'm going to have to find a page. It is, it's.
I mean, that's why we're here.
Okay, let's do it. Salaries, I think that was one place where I want to start. If Dorothea could take a second look at that. I did some cursory research regarding, for instance, mayoral salaries based on the minutes from the February 13th meeting that I read because I was absent. And so I looked into, and I didn't print them out, I'm sorry, it was out of ink at home. I looked into Scottsville, Rockport, local, Ponyo Falls Airport. And there wasn't anything even close to what was being proposed. So that was a point that I, I'd like to discuss.
Can I interject really quickly?
Sure.
Um, I won't accept any raise anyway on my salary. I'm not going to accept it.
Okay.
So I want to back in the budget.
That deserves a strike.
That's always been my starting grade anyway.
Okay. So that's one.
Mm-hmm.
The other was I, you know, I'd like to make another look at the building inspectors' anticipated salary there as well. Sometimes, and I'm not, I'm never certain about this, whether this should happen in executive session or not. So that's a question, I don't know.
Good question. When talking specific salary.
Specific and poor.
I, I would think we would do it in executive until it's settled.
And then you come out and make the motion. So we, we could certainly address them with that, set that up, maybe even, even on next Monday.
Monday, yeah, that's a good idea.
So that was the second.
Particularly because it sounds, the way you're putting it, that it, it's based on the structure or the, the structure of it or the performance of the individual.
Okay, so we'll put that down then for our, our next meeting then on the 20th. Okay, anything else from you? Yeah, good, okay. Anything else you, yeah, you go ahead, yeah.
Sorry, I just wasn't clear, as, as long as we're talking about line items, I did do a, a quick, and, and I'm sure that Dorothea will do the same kind of thing. I just sort of highlighted and did conditional formatting for different items based on the, the amount they're increasing. I know that we've got quite a bit of, of money allocated for computer replacements and desks. There's some legal expenses that looks like they were increasing. And I, I think that would be an area to, to look at as well. I, I don't, I don't know what the basis was in the estimates that we've received for, for the increases that we're looking at.
The attorneys themselves gave them to us?
Yes, I believe we, the office received the estimates from the attorneys. Now we just like to make sure that those are justified in terms of what's expected.
Well, yeah, to that point, we don't always accept exactly what they say. Sometimes we increase it, sometimes we, yeah.
So it's a good one.
It's our decision, not theirs. So we should look at that, each line item and see if it's realistic.
Yeah, they give us the estimate essentially as a starting point, you know?
Yeah, that's a good one.
Zach, we still talking about the F-150 Lightning?
I would love to, I'm not sure it's available right now. We have, I, I have, the shirt's up my sleeve, I'm not sure if this is the right day to talk about it, though.
Well, still to talk about maybe before the next, next meeting, just a few.
Putting it back in or taking, or?
I think it's still in there, so it'd be whether or not we can afford that based on multiple reasons.
That's, that's come up.
Yeah, Dorothea's on it too.
We're growing, we need, we need another vehicle, we need people around.
Yeah, I mean, you were even looking at another tool cap, which would be cheap.
Kubota, which is not, you know, the perfect F-10 thing, but it's good for local, you know, running around.
Doesn't solve things, though.
Nope.
No, I know, I understand now, okay. Anything else to add?
A really big one here is just not in any particular order, just looking at the stuff that's read. The windows and HVAC, if we're looking at a grant for that, is that still something that we need to reflect? Or do we hope for more from a grant and then account for it in later cycles if it doesn't come through?
I think you just answered the question, yeah. Because there's no guarantee on a grant, you know? So you put it in there, but we're going to go for it. And also because we're a climate smart community, we already have the 5,000 that we can put towards that, towards the engineering of it, you know? And then once we do that, it gives us more points because the next grant level, I believe, is 25,000. So, you know, we're, we're chipping away, you know? And like every time you take some, one of those courses or Steve does, that goes towards the points to get to that next level of funding.
As will the electrical upgrade to the building.
Yep, that's a whole other thing too, yeah. If we do the electrical upgrade, that'll be huge because we're also planning on putting EV chargers. And then again, that gives us more points. And then I think the grants top out at 100,000, you know, so we can keep going on these grants. And these are non-matching grants, this is an outright grant, which is great. So, so we, right now it's in there because you can't, you know, you can't count on it until you have it, you know? So it's in there, yeah.
And we also don't have until Dorothea brings it to us, is the, the new electrical system and, and box, right? That's not reflected in it.
No, no.
You're saying, so that is also another big component.
It is, it is a big component, and that's why she's not touching general fund for things. Because she, you know, that was part, just part of a brief conversation we had today. Because we have a healthy fund balance and, but we also hopefully can be looking at grants. But you can't count on the grant until you get it, you know, that's how it works, yeah. Any, anything else, Justin? Okay. Dan, have any other line items you'd like to?
No, not until we, I need it in Excel.
Oh, okay, okay.
So I don't have the latest in Excel.
Yeah, okay, she'll, she'll.
But it's a very similar exercise to what Justin.
Okay, yeah. Nay, any other items you'd like to call out specifically? Okay, okay, well, I think we've had, I think we had a good stopping point. I mean, I think we've all kind of covered a lot of bases here. And I think Dorothea will be getting, turning, turning this around when she's feeling better and getting this to us as quickly as she can. I mean, she really felt a sense of urgency, you know, about it as well, so. Brooklyn, is there anything you'd like to add as well?
Uh, nope, I have nothing as of now. I'll be more involved with Dorothea and I've never dealt with sewer rooms.
Yeah.
Now I'm more than just kind of gathering info for her and passing it along.
Okay.
So then she'll probably have her, her badge carried on her shoulder watching, so I will.
I, I guess she's, my, my other main thing here is going back to the sewer rental moment. The, the idea of the attribution is good. The danger is that if, it, it's always a, an estimate of what the percentage apportion is, and that's okay. We want to verify that in the data. There's not much risk if we go low because we don't have anything right now. That's, that's fine if it's too low. If, if we say 10%, we apportion 10% and it's actually 15% based on more empirical data, there's really no loss, we're moving in the right direction. The danger if we go too high is that we have costs that people are paying for with the sewers that are kind of hidden in a different category. And, and that's, I, I think, especially if you look at the edge cases, things like Wood Creek, where they're not getting the benefits of the, the village government, they're just paying the, the sewer rents. I think there, there is a danger in estimating too high. So with Dorothea's cut of this, I would also like to see, for the non-DPW sections where we don't have data validating what the apportion is, I'd like to say it's 10% rather than 22% as a first pass until we have data to establish that it's higher.
Right, and we've already covered this. So we've already covered that we're going to talk to the comptroller and get a document from them and NICOM and get a document from them. And so I don't understand why we need to cover it again. You made it clear, Justin.
And I understand your point about going low, the rationale for that. And what I would like to push back a little on the word hidden because we are actually trying to, to make this a little more in line with what the recommended strategy is. And so saying that we're trying to hide money somewhere is, is not accurate. We're actually trying to straighten up the accounting here going forward. So, but I, I absolutely agree with you about starting, starting low, that makes, that, that makes sense and see if, if, I mean, I understand.
Well, we're starting low also with the assumption somehow that the current treasurer has just simply come up with this number that is not justified. And so I go back to your earlier comments where, let's take a look, as Dan said, we've asked and answered. You know, let's take a look at this documentation, let's take a look at how things are derived. And again, I think it's been, it's been a good discussion, I think all the input's been really good. Anything else to add from anybody? We're all good, okay. I make a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
One second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lightew.
Aye.
Trustee Winkier.
Aye.
Trustee Q.
Aye.
Trustee Spencer.
Aye.
Mayor Plon.
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, meeting next Monday.
We have a.
Thank you, at 4:00.
Well, the numbers of the budget will be published next week, so we can follow along.
March 20th.